It's Dave Wiltse. Is anybody there?
Dave, I'm on the line. It's Carl.
Hi Carl. I didn't know if there were two different sets of passcodes and meeting IDs for the other two different meetings, so I was a little anxious that I was using the wrong one.
Yeah, I'm just looking at everybody in the boardroom. We must not be started yet, I'm sure.
Okay. Is Sheri gonna chair this, or are you gonna chair it?
Sheri's gonna chair, just because it's just easier.
Logistically, yes, I understand. We hope.
Absolutely.
Boone County Board Meeting of Thursday, February 3, 2022 to order at 5:52 PM. We start with roll call, Julie. I'm sorry. Yeah, we're gonna do that. Hang on, I'm gonna switch. Getting confused. You all stand, please, for the Pledge of Allegiance, and then stay standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lord, it is an honor and a privilege to represent the citizens of this county. Please guide us to use our collective wisdom to make decisions that are done in your name with your grace. And please watch over all those who protect our freedom and keep us safe. In your name we pray, amen.
Thank you.
Okay, now we'll move on to roll calls.
Carl Johnson.
Oh.
And Sheri Gieske?
I'm here.
Jonathan Van Laar.
Here.
Dave Wiltse.
Here.
Steve Shabacher.
Here.
Ryan Curry.
Here.
Tom Walberg.
Here.
Bill Robertson.
Here.
Sherri Bartelt.
Here.
Ronnie Riley.
Here.
Freddie De La Trinidad.
Here.
Thank you. We have two requests to attend the meeting. And the first one is from Carl Johnson. I'd like to have a motion made by Carl to attend tonight's meetings. Motion made by Rodney, seconded by Steve Shabacher. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Let me have to do roll call, please. Opposed? Motion carries. The second one is a request from Dave Wiltse to attend all of the February county meetings virtually. I'd like a motion to approve that.
All moved.
Bill Robertson made the motion, Jonathan Van Laar seconded. Any conversation? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries, Julie. I would next like to ask for an approval of the agenda for tonight.
All moved.
Motion made by Ryan Curry, seconded by Steve Shabacher. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is there any opposed? Couldn't hear what that was.
I think it's just.
Motion carries. I didn't know if that was an echo, or if someone was saying opposed. Was what?
It was Dave voting.
Oh, okay, thank you. All right, motion carries. Is there anyone in the audience for public comment for this special board meeting? I know we've got one for the committee meeting, right, Fay, coming up? Okay, let's move on. Item six is an appointment and a recognition. And is our clerk, or is our circuit clerk here? No? She told me she was coming.
The full circuit clerk.
Yeah, the proposed circuit clerk. Okay, I'm going to go ahead because what we have, tonight's meeting is in order to approve the appointment, a resolution to appoint a circuit clerk. I'm going to read it, and it says, Resolution 22-13 is a resolution to appoint a circuit clerk. Whereas the retirement of Linda Anderson, clerk of the Circuit Court of the 17th Judicial Circuit, Boone County, effective November 30, 2021, caused a vacancy to exist in that office. And whereas, in accordance with Illinois law, the central committees of the Boone County Republican Party and the Boone County Democratic Party were duly informed of said vacancy. And whereas, 10 ILCS 5/25-11 provides for the chairman of the county board to appoint the clerk of the Circuit Court of the 17th Judicial Circuit, Boone County, with the advice and consent of the county board. And whereas, the county board reviewed and considered all of the available relevant information and made the following recommendations. Now, therefore, it be resolved. Number one, Pamela Coduto is hereby appointed clerk of the Circuit Court of the 17th Judicial Circuit, Boone County. Number two, the term of the office shall commence on February 3, 2022, and upon the appointee executing the oath of office. Number three, this appointment shall be effective until November 30 of 2022. Number four, until the expiration of the appointment as circuit clerk of the 17th Judicial Circuit, Boone County, Pamela Coduto shall be compensated at the rate of $78,598 annually, a sum previously set in compliance with statute. Pamela Coduto shall also retain her current position in the circuit clerk's office during this appointment, and agrees that her compensation for both positions shall be limited to the amount in paragraph four above. I need a motion to pass this. Motion made by Rodney Riley, seconded by Sherri Bartelt. Any questions? Conversation. Go ahead.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Dave.
This is Dave Wiltse. I thank the chairman and the state's attorney for speaking with me today. I had some concerns about this appointment, but I know that we are following the statute as the statute is written. I personally would have preferred that we put in a candidate that would be able to not only learn the job, but would be one that would be standing for election, so that that individual would have familiarity with the office and with the voters. I understand that that's not in the statute. And accordingly, although I would prefer to select a person on that basis, I will be voting yes tonight on this recommendation.
Thank you, Dave. Rodney?
Yeah, I'd just like to say, I want to commend everybody that was involved in this process. I think it was an excellent decision, keeping politics out of it. I think, from what I understand, the office is running very smoothly right now, and I think it's a great idea to keep it going that way until election, and the voters will have their say. I think that's an excellent, excellent way we're doing it. Thank you.
Any other comments? I don't know if you want to make.
I would, but I would make.
Well, the records show that Ray Larson arrived at 5:56 PM. All in favor of the res-
I would do a roll call, though.
Okay, let's do a roll call.
Carl Johnson.
Yes.
Sheri Gieske.
Yes.
Jonathan Van Laar.
Yes.
Dave Wiltse.
Yes.
Ray Larson.
You never know.
Aye.
Steve Shabacher.
Yes.
Ryan Curry.
Yes.
Tom Walberg.
Yes.
Bill Robertson.
Yes.
Sherri Bartelt.
Yes.
Rodney Riley.
Yes.
Freddie De La Trinidad.
Yes.
Motion carries. And Pam, I think your timing is impeccable. Would you like to stand? And do you want to say a few words?
Thank you very much for the appointment.
Your timing was perfect. Thank you. Motion carries. I think that's about it. We don't have any other business tonight for this meeting. All right, I think I need a motion. Motion to adjourn by Rodney Riley, seconded by Jonathan Van Laar. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is adjourned. Immediate adjourn. Thank you. Thursday, February 3, 2022, Committee of the Whole Meeting for Administration to Order. Let's have, first of all, a roll call. I'm losing my roll call person, so I'll group myself. Carl Johnson.
Here.
Jonathan Van Laar.
Here.
Wiltse.
Here.
Ray Larson.
Here.
Steve Shabacher.
Here.
Ryan Curry.
Here.
Tom Walberg.
Here.
Bill Robertson.
Here.
Sherri Bartelt.
Here.
Rodney Riley.
Here.
Freddie De La Trinidad.
Here.
And I'm Sheri Gieske, and I too am here. All right, let's move on. I need a motion to approve the minutes of the January 13, 2022 Committee of the Whole Finance Meeting.
All moved.
Motion made by Steve Shabacher.
Seconded.
Seconded by Bill Robertson. Any questions? Conversation? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Looking for approval of the agenda for tonight.
All moved.
Jonathan Van Laar made the motion. Seconded by Bill. Any changes? No, we're good to go. Questions or comments? All in favor of approving tonight's agenda?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I think we're now up to our public comment, and I know we have at least one. I don't think there are any others out there. Are there any on the phone, or we got any out there? Pam?
No.
Nope, none. We have one from Fay Elwanger. Fay, would you like to come up to the podium? And give your name, your address, and speak loudly right into that microphone, okay?
Okay. Name is Fay Elwanger. I live at 8653 Russellville Road. I believe it's on your agenda for tonight. For tonight, I was informed by Izzy that it was gonna be, they're trying to be, put a solar farm off Maringle Road, which is adjacent to my property. I lived on a farm that's been in the Elwanger family since 1903. My son's with me tonight. He's gonna be the fourth generation. Where they want to put this, the location is terrible. They want to put the location of the driveway on the crest of the hill on Maringle Road, and I don't know if many of you have driven Maringle Road, but it's like a small I-90. Morning and night, you couldn't hardly cross it on Russellville Road. If they put this solar farm in there, it's gonna lower the property values of my adjacent neighbors. I have drain tile that runs from my farm across the road through this property. I spent over $100,000 putting a drain tile from my property through this one to get an outlet. I was with KB. It's good farmland. My son, my youngest son, when he gets here, he can show you on his cellphone that it, telling water says it's not good for putting solar farms. And if you don't believe everything I say, go to the grocery store and buy some groceries. Pacemaker now is charging a surcharge on their groceries. We need farmland. We need all we can get. There's better places to put solar farms than on farmland that's located where it's at. There's swamp ground, there's edge of woods, there's buildings all over in Boone County. Why don't they put solar farms on, solar panels on top of Chrysler? I mean, they don't have to take farmland out of production. I think that's about how I've got to say, other than, I think that you ought to take some consideration of this because we just built a new house on this property eight years ago, and I have to look out that front window every morning when I get up and look at the solar panels. And I don't think, I don't know how many years I got left, but I sure as heck don't want to look at solar panels the rest of my life. And that's it.
Thank you, Kate Fay. Monthly presentations, I think we start, I think I get to turn this over to Ryan Curry, right?
I think so. All right. We are moving on to 6.1 monthly presentations, and we'll start with the sheriff. If you could step up to that microphone and speak loud and clear, that'd be great.
Thank you.
We'll do whatever.
You're not scaring him, Ryan.
I want to start the meeting off with sad news. We had one of our longtime EMA members, Robert Gieske, pass this week. His funeral was yesterday. For those of you who didn't know him, he's been in our EMA group for over 30 years. He's big into storm watching. Actually, he's been our rock for that. And we all know in Boone County how we like to, you know, be alert for tornadoes. He was an expert in that, in that field. So, that's a really big loss for our program, and he passed at age 62. So, really sad. So, we send our prayers to his family. Number two, just wanted to go over a couple personnel changes that we have coming. It builds up to my overtime report. We have been kind of forced, we've been members of the DEA Task Force for the past 25 years. It's been a great partnership. We're gonna pull one of our officers out of that organization because we're struggling with manpower so bad. It's much more important that they come and cover our streets than do that, the long-term investigations. We'll leave that spot open for now, but right now, we had put a guy on disability. He had COVID, hasn't recovered from it. It's been four months. He went on disability, and I'm hopeful that he returns someday. I'm not sure when that's gonna happen. So, that just adds to our manpower shortage. Right now, that puts us down at a minimum of four officers. Our dispatch center, we're currently three down. We just got notice that additional one's gonna retire, and we still are waiting to move one to our 911 coordinator, which would put us five down in the dispatch center out of 16. So, it's been a real struggle. Corrections, we're down personnel. We have one in the reserves, too. So, this is a nationwide problem. You know, all the sheriffs that I talked to, the police departments that we talked to, you know, we are struggling getting law enforcement officers. Our dispatch center, every dispatch center in the country is struggling. I would tell you, it's not for lack of trying. Lieutenant Malloy, in the last thirty days, have interviewed 40 different people, and not one was qualified to be a dispatcher. So, or couldn't pass the test, or didn't show, or type, or couldn't talk, or all the above. So, it's been a real challenge. So, with that, with that being said, again, every month, I just try to keep the board updated with our overtime because that's usually where we have the biggest issues. Because of all these shortages, really dictates how we do in our overtime report, and we are only two months into the budget. In patrol, we're about 3% over budget, but it isn't terrible. It's 8,000. Dispatch is already 13% over budget, and corrections is 15%. So, we're gonna keep monitoring that. We keep trying different things, but it really comes down to personnel. And the biggest problem we have department-wide is we have people working every day, which, again, we talked about, it's not healthy for our people to work every single day. So, it is a major concern for us, but we're gonna continue to, you know, try to fill these positions, you know, as soon as possible. For those who don't know, we had a, we had an individual have a medical emergency, lose control of his vehicle, and drive through our Belvedere storage gate and fence, struck one of our trailers. We had a company come out, only one company out. It is a security risk. We do have stuff at that property that we have to fix immediately, or we have to protect. So, just kind of a heads up, it should be an insurance thing, but it's over $7,000 in damage. Literally went through, through the 10-foot gate and fence out the other end. So, just kind of keep that in mind. Also, I'm just gonna touch on, I think I brought it up, you know, in the past, Judge Tobin, we're looking at possibly doing some work at the courthouse. Right now, where our juries sit, it's embarrassing. Part of that, that old courthouse, you'll have to see it to believe it. So, we will, you know, be having people walk through there. We're looking at, possibly, we got a grant from Severson, so we'd like to maybe look at spending some of that money to update those rooms. Judge Tobin has some ideas, but we're gonna need an architect to come in and actually do that, at least do an initial drawing, to see if we're even able to do it. So, we're not gonna, we're not gonna talk about, you know, finances today, but just to kind of prepare the board for next week, it's gonna be pretty minimal cost, and, you know, they're gonna be able to give us a price on, is it gonna cost us $100,000, or is it gonna cost us a million? Or is it gonna, not gonna be able to do it because it's structurally not able to do that in that old building. So, these are things we've talked about for years and years. Now, we have a pretty good opportunity to maybe, you know, for a small fee, at least to see where we're gonna be at, and then we can use that plan in the future. But we'll talk more about that next week at the finance committee. Other than that, we do have another sergeant, you know, helps with the lack of staff. He's actually being sent to the staff in command. Most of you who've been here, you understand, we always train our replacements. It's extremely important. All our supervisors go to the high-level command and staff class put on by Northwestern, which is a nationally-known program. They're actually coming out to Ogle County with a class. So, we're gonna get our sergeant into that. That puts us probably, at least four of our sergeants have gone to that school, if not FBI Academy. So, it's just about training our replacements for the future. Other than that, that's just a quick overview of some of the things with the sheriff's office. If anybody has any questions, I'm gonna answer them.
Any questions for the sheriff? Rodney?
Staff up command, is it still 10 weeks?
It's 10 weeks, yep.
Going all?
Two weeks on, two weeks off.
Never mind.
Yep.
Any other questions or comments in the boardroom or on the phone? Please offer our condolences to Mr. Gieske's family as well, the board's behalf.
Thank you. Thank you.
Next, 6.2 highway engineer. Justin here. Justin, are you on the phone? Into Section 7 Quarterly Department Presentations, and start with the state's attorney, Tricia.
Thank you. I will keep mine brief. I don't want to steal her thunder, but I want to congratulate Kate Cross. She was appointed today as the public defender by the chief judge, so she's giving her report next. She's gonna explain a little bit about how the new cases are filed in the circuit clerk's office. So, that now has changed the way that we're gonna present our statistics to you, and she'll get into that a little bit more. I did, on the board docs, submit our report, we had 227 defendants in Boone County for the month of January. Those include 25 felony cases, and that goes all the way through, a lot of that, of course, is traffic. We do have a change in the judges in Boone County. Judge Young retired at the end of last year. We now have Judge Ryan Swift is now in courtroom two. He hears misdemeanor DUIs, traffic cases. He is also willing to be on call every other month, like Judge Tobin does, and hear our search warrants at night. So, we're very thankful that he does that, and we wish, of course, Judge Young the best in his retirement. We continue just to be busy with real cases. As the board may recall, we had, unfortunately, four murders at the end of last year here in Belvedere. Those are keeping us very busy, time-intensive. In addition, again, very busy with civil end, with FOIA requests. I think I mentioned last year, those continue to be on the rise. We also had recently won a four-for-sure case that went to trial, and we were able to forfeit drug money in the amount of $27,500, and a portion of that does stay here in Boone County. I don't know if anyone has any other questions for me about the report?
Any questions in the boardroom or on the phone?
Thank you.
Without further ado, public defender, Kate? Welcome.
Thank you. My name's Kate Cross. I was here last month as the interim public defender, and the big update at our office, I was officially appointed as the public defender this afternoon. I'm incredibly honored by the appointment, and I'm looking forward to working with the board for years to come. As I mentioned last month, our office has been working one attorney short till the appointment was made. So, one of our top priorities in the office is posting for that open position. We'll likely be looking for an attorney with zero to three years' experience, ties to the area, and a shown interest in public service. It does take a lot of time and energy to hire and train a new attorney, so our hope would be to find a great candidate, to train them, and to keep them for the long term. So, switching gears, I know Tricia touched on this. Taking a look at our December Services rendered report, you may notice that my report has two column breakdowns. One is for cases, and one is for clients. In prior reports, you were only seeing the numbers in the cases column. I added the clients' column because we'll be transitioning over to counting clients instead of cases, and I wanted you to be able to see how those numbers compare for the first few months of that transition. The change over to the clients' column is necessary because of the changes that have taken place in the circuit clerk's office starting January 1. Statewide clerk's offices have changed the way they number and categorize cases. So, hopefully, to make a little more sense of this, I'm gonna attempt to explain it through an example. Let's say someone is pulled over and arrested for a DUI, and along with that, they get two tickets, a speeding ticket and a suspended license ticket. Before January 1, the clerk's office would assign those cases a DUI number and two traffic numbers, and the way that we counted it before in our office would be three new cases, one DUI and two traffics. After January 1, the clerk's new naming system, that that same case would only get one. case would only get one DUI number, and the two traffic charges would be included in that DUI number. So in our office, we would now count that case as one DUI client. So because of the shift at the Clerk's Office, I wanted to also shift the way that our cases were counted, and I wanted you to be aware that our case numbers are not going to be reducing. The cases are just consolidated under that new naming system. In addition, over the next few months, I do plan on assessing the needs of our office and working on updating our, or creating policies and procedures to address those needs. With that, I'll also be looking at the monthly services rendered reports, as well as information presented at the quarterly meetings to you all. I do welcome any feedback or questions that you may have, and I look forward to working with everyone.
Thank you. Do we have any questions in the boardroom or comments for Mrs. Cross? Go ahead, Sherri.
Kate, the changing from the number of cases to clients, I mean, I get the number difference from an overall perspective. What impact does that have on the whole process? Make it easier, more difficult? Is it?
I know, the experience of our assistants in the office, they love it because it's much less numbering to keep track of. You just get a DUI, like, if you had a DUI with a bunch of traffic tickets, you just have a DUI number, and then all of the cases are, all of the charges are included with that. So I do think it makes it easier to track and less likely that we lose them in court with more serious cases. The feedback that I've heard from the Clerk's Office has also been the same. We like the more streamlined version.
Thank you.
Any other comments in the boardroom? Any comments or questions on the phone? Thank you. Moving along to Probation 7.3, Amy.
Good evening. Sorry. Amy Galeno with Boone County Probation. I don't know if you had a chance to look over my written report. Last month, I talked about turning in my annual plan for the year. That was turned into the administrative of the Illinois Courts, and it was accepted. So the report is good for the next year, what our plans and goals are, and how we plan to spend our money, the money from AOIC and the county money. Now, this month, as it says in the report, I am working on the financial matrix from last year, so I can show AOIC where the money was spent. I have to account for all the money for both funds, the 69 and the 39. Our Drug Court Officer Jenny Crotchet is working on a new project in conjunction with Winnebago County. We're looking to reallocate some of her grant money to see if we can expand our Drug Court program, and I talked a little bit about that in the board report. As you can see, our detention budget is already pretty high. We've had some significant problems with crimes of violence, some gun charges. You know, really working on all options with our office and State's Attorney's Office and the courts on how to get juveniles out of detention. It just doesn't work as swiftly as we would like. We have already gone through a significant amount of our budget for the first three months of the year. So, and I know last year, we did go over budget on our detention budget. So our office is down an officer. We are looking for a new probation officer. We lost Officer Wally Gammon two weeks ago to new employment, so I have an open position.
Any questions?
Have any questions in the courtroom, or the courtroom?
Yeah.
In the boardroom? Sometimes it feels like the boardroom. Approach the bench.
I noticed in here about the Drug Court, I'm assuming we've seen an uptick in, have you seen an uptick in the Drug Court referrals with the pandemic and all this, or the best state about the same?
No, our numbers are higher now. We do see, definitely see a need for a mental health court. I don't know that we have enough numbers in our county to warrant a whole grant on its own. So we're gathering numbers. That's what this reallocation will be for, to see if we don't have enough numbers, how would we run a program like that? You know, we're working with the State's Attorney's Office on that, the Public Defender's Office, and the Judicial Branch.
Okay. Just out of curiosity, and I don't mean to put you on the spot or anything, but success rate, have you got, I mean, do you have a figure in mind, or recidivism rate? How's it going? I mean, it's a tough situation, but it's a work in progress, I'm sure.
Correct. Correct. And sometimes my level of success might be somebody's level may be different than my level of success. We do not have a tracking system on that. Last time, last year about this time, I was planning on the board, asking me that question, and I wasn't asked. But when I did look at that, the success rate isn't always the best on them resuming use. The success rate on them not reoffending was good. It was very good. We're not seeing our clients in the last two years coming back with new charges. Some have, but not majority of them, honestly. So that's a success. Of course, we would like to see them not resume using substances, but baby steps.
Go ahead, Sherri.
Yes, you brought up about mental illness. Are the two new ladies that were hired, Perillo and Schwartz, are they helping you out quite a bit with what you're doing?
We work with them every day.
Good.
Sometimes all day. So we are a big part of the rollout of the third grant that Jessica is working on in conjunction with Rosecrans and Remedies. Each one of those departments, those businesses, will be providing a mental health outreach worker to Boone County. So they will be working on the streets, going follow-up on police calls. So we have the core grant that has one for substance abuse. Then we have the SORIS grant, that's our second grant that you guys have all heard us talk about. Michelle Schwartz, who's a Belvedere Police Officer, she follows up on all police calls. Then we have now the two, they haven't been hired yet, but two mental health outreach workers that will be part of the third grant. And Jessica Perillo is in charge of all those pieces. So it's a lot of moving parts. They're also very involved with the jail. The jail has a lot of new stuff going on because of those grants, and I know Sheriff Ernest has been great with bringing on all the new programming, you know, offering treatment in the jail, behavioral health counseling, substance abuse counseling. So we're moving along.
I'm glad to hear that. Thank you.
When you refer to Mental Health Court, is that like a tip court that Winnebago County uses?
Yes, exactly, right. Again, we looked at this several years ago, and we recognized we didn't have enough numbers for a grant. So now we're trying to figure out how to make it work like on a special track running along with our Drug Court. It's a work in progress. So.
I can only assume that those that were hired for this only add to better documenting proof that it is needed.
For sure.
Right? So, and is it expensive to bring a program like that in?
The cost of, so that third grant that we have for, it's called the CAP Grant, Tricia? CAP Grant? I believe that was a $550,000 grant, for three years.
Yep.
I do not know the specifics of that budget. But we met today, and the plan is to hopefully start hiring soon. Amanda, Amanda Mill with our department would know more accurate data about that information.
Thank you. I just had a clarification question. So in your report, you mentioned that we've utilized 42% of the, for the juvenile placement, fiscal year 22, when would that end, fiscal year 22?
It ends in November.
So you're three months into it?
Yes.
You've consumed 42%.
Correct. Yes.
What is a typical number that you, juveniles that you place on an average?
Well, last year was the first year that I can recall ever going over budget. Last year, I've been in this role, this is, I'm two and a half years in. Our budget, the first year I was in, was 50,000. We didn't come close to going over the budget. And I think that was historically normal, not to go over budget. Last year, starting in the fall, crime rates, juveniles started spiking, domestic violence issues, aggravated batteries, crimes of violence. I mean, maybe, Tricia Smith, if you have any other indication of why that's happening, I really...
There's only certain offenses that would qualify juveniles to be in detention. And unfortunately, we have had, for maybe the last approximate year, a series of juveniles in our community that have met that criteria. And unfortunately, for the safety of the community and themselves, that's unfortunately where the court has decided to place them. There's still limits on how long they can be there until cases are resolved, but we are, I guess, have quite a few in placement that we, and I would agree with Amy in that, as long as I can recall, we've never come close to going over budget on that issue.
Thank you.
At the end of last year is when October, probably September, October, November, we realized we knew we were going to have a problem, and we were over budget last year. And I was hopeful that it would be better this year, but...
It seems like it's probably a pretty tough thing to predict a budget for. I mean...
It is tough to predict, and there's several factors that go into play. So the probation department would authorize lodging on somebody, but once lodging has happened, it's not up to us when to take them out. So it's up to really the court, when, in other parties, the State's Attorney, the attorneys for the clients, on when are we going to get those individuals out. We do our best to work on programming to get these clients out of custody. That's really what they need, not to necessarily be in custody. And that sometimes is a slow process as well, especially with COVID. Several agencies were ready to take our clients out of custody, go into programming, and then they'd have a COVID shutdown for two weeks or a month. That has happened several times, and that's then costly for us.
Any other questions in the boardroom or on the phone? Thank you. 7.4 Circuit Court, and Pam? If the boardroom doesn't mind, we can let Justin report after this.
Fine.
All right. Go ahead. Sorry. Thank you.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. The fiscal year has brought significant changes to our office, and after the well-deserved retirement in November of our Circuit Clerk, Linda Anderson, I'm very proud to say that our entire staff as a team has kept the courts running smoothly, and they've gone above and beyond during this pandemic. They've had to adjust their duties to adapt to all the changes brought on by having hybrid courts. So we have people attending virtually and in person at the same time. While they're keeping the court record and having to take down everything that's happening in court, they have to keep track of who's present in person and who's present virtually, and what documents are handed in, and the documents that they're going to have to get later that are virtual, and it's become much more complicated. They've also gone to a complex method of court scheduling, and due to the social distancing requirements, this was necessary to have so many people in on like 15-minute intervals. And so they have multiple calendars up while they're navigating the courtroom. They have multiple calendars up at the same time to try to pick a court date and a slot, all while listening to the court record and tracking everything. So they're really doing a lot of juggling up there in the courtrooms. And in addition to that, we've had many statewide changes that have affected our office. As Attorney Smith and Cross have talked about with the case types, the, they've added, along with additional, so the clerks have additional civil case types, additional criminal case types that we're learning and understanding. There's also additional definitions to our document security. These are certain flags. Every single document that we bring in on a case has a flag attached to it, and that governs who can see the document. It governs the security of the document. So it's very important to understand these flags and what's required with each document, and to attach the proper flags for, and it's all per statute. There's other statewide changes that included a new electronic filing portal statewide. And statewide, it's, it's had a lot of problems. So all of the counties everywhere are having problems with the new e-filing portal. So our clerks are taking all civil filings electronically, also criminal filings. Our judges process these electronic orders, and we're having to juggle with problems with the system and not getting quick results with these. So that's been unfortunate. It causes frustrations, not only for the court users, but it causes frustrations for the public who are e-filing these documents. And, you know, we're trying to help them through it as best as we can. This, the other changes that we have include new program implementations in cooperation with the 17th Circuit. We're currently working on implementing ODR, and we've been working with the State's Attorney's Office on this. This is online dispute resolution, and we're beginning the testing stages of this. We're also, we've also implemented electronic citations, and that's in cooperation with the Sheriff's Department and the Belvedere PD, along with our Boone County IT staff. And we actually went live yesterday with our e-citations. So we're happy about that. It's been a long two-year project, and now we're going live with it, and it's going to be helpful for all of our agencies involved. And the stress level, the staff is working at a high stress level, and they're fantastic. Along with keeping up with all the changes in their own daily tasks, we're continually distributing new information to them about all the revisions and the changes in procedures. And we're having to do last-minute cross-training with the pandemic, and we'll have periodic, people may be out on quarantine. So we may have to be cross-training, putting our clerks in different areas where they've not had particular training. And that's the ultimate goal for us, is to cross-train everybody, but it's hard to do because of their, the workload that they already have and staff reductions. So it's really hard to fit the cross-training in there. So we're doing a lot of it on the fly. Through all of this, they really serve the public and other court personnel, and along with the other agencies, state and local, and they're professional and courteous, and I'm just very proud of the staff at Circuit Clerk's Office. I did attach a document and about the revenue, it's just a general document, if you saw it, about the, Lenny, the funds that we sent to the General Revenue Fund. You can see how it's kind of got a dipping trend. So I don't know if any of you have questions about that, but that is...
Any questions in the boardroom? Go ahead, Rodney.
Just real quick, Pam, how many clerks are in your office?
We have currently 18.
18, okay.
Yes. And we are understaffed. We are understaffed. We've had a couple vacancies that we haven't filled yet that we're currently working on, but we were at 21 at one point, so.
Good luck in the next couple months.
Thank you.
Any other questions in the boardroom or on the phone? Thank you.
Thank you.
Justin, do you want to grace us with your presence? Or is yours, sir?
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So I have a brief summary on board docs. I'll do that real quickly. The first item is electronic recycling. Here recently, we were asked to, by the State of Illinois EPA, we were asked to, along with Cook County, to go through our program. We're one of the few successful rural programs. We're the only one that does not charge residents for electronic recycling. So if you have time and are interested, sort of click on that. You can watch my presentation. The second item is one that is of interest to many in Boone County. As I mentioned last month, US 20 between Shaw, Shaw and City of Belvedere is going to be, is currently hitting in the planning stages to be upgraded from two-lane to four-lane. You know, we had a meeting, I held a public meeting last month to go over some of the details, and a couple of the items, a few of the items, I heard a lot of comments... details, and a couple of the items, a few of the items, I heard a lot of comments back from the public line. So I just wanted to remind everybody that, you know, it's, it's not a county bridge, it's an IDOT bridge, but I certainly can pass those on. But quite frequently, if you, if you do have any concerns, the more individuals that go to IDOT, the louder that voice is. Two of the top issues that were, that came out of the public meeting, I'd say the top one was a, the future roadway, a four-lane roadway, limited access roadway will be a 45 mile-per-hour posted speed limit. There's, you know, quite a few people that didn't understand why that speed limit would be 45, it was, if it's a limited access road, a four-lane road. So that was, that was probably the most common comment. So if, if you have those comments, certainly contact IDOT directly. Second one was the raised median. So the future State Street between Belvidere and Winnebago County is currently proposed to have a raised median. So what a raised median does is it's, it's a, the raised median between the eastbound and westbound lanes, and it prevents traffic from crossing over. So if there's a access point not on, at, not at intersection, and you're going the opposite direction, you're not able to cross over the roadway to access it, and vice versa, getting back onto the roadway, there's only a, they call it a right-in, right-out for those access points that are not at intersections, because you're, you're only able to enter that access point through a right-hand turn and leave through a right-hand turn, and not able to take a left to go in the opposite direction. So those, those were the two primary concerns again. So if you have comments or concerns, that item number two has a link to IDOT's website, and it has contact information on there. I urge everyone, now is the time to talk, to speak out if you have any, any concerns at all. The third item that I brought up, that I have kind of a long-range concern with is the intersection of Town Hall Road and US 20. You know, we have long-range plans to do some improvements there. Those were not shown on the IDOT plan, so I've been working on those as well. So those were the top three, three issues. And again, I highly urge anybody that has any concerns, or those concerns or other concerns, if it's not localized to IDOT here in the next six months or so, they will start the next process, and, and things will continue. Now's the time if, and they are changeable right now, and, and this is the time, this is, if there's going to be any changes that the public desires, now is the time to voice those opinions. So can't stress that enough. So, and feel free to contact me if you're not able to get through the link, or, or ensure the person to talk to at IDOT. Third item is a bridge item. You know, we've all heard of the bridge collapse out east, and, so I just wanted to, I know in the past I've kind of beat the drum of needing some bridge replacement funding and long-range funding, and, and it was kind of tiring for the first, you know, for the last five years or so. I'm not here to do that necessarily, but I just wanted to bring everyone up to speed where we're at. So in the county, well, township has, township bridges, there's about 51 bridges in the township. In the county, there's 16 in the county jurisdiction on the county highways. Out of those, there's about five that are rated deficient or poor condition. That's the term you always hear in the news media, five township and five county. So we do have some work to do on those. Typically, the, the reason for the rating of poor is because a lot of these bridges, in fact, I believe all of them except for, all the 10 that are rated poor, all of them except for one, I believe, has timber substructure. So it was built on basically telephone poles driven into the ground, and that's the, the foundation, and those were built in the, anywhere from the 50s to 70s. And typically, well, they're, they're beyond their design life. So, so that's, that's a concern. You know, I'm not trying to say there's going to be a bridge collapse, or, or there's immediate safety concerns. We inspect these things on a regular basis, and we, you know, take safety very serious. Some of the bridges are getting load-rated though, as we've seen. This last year, we saw the bridge over the Beaver Creek on Poplar Grove get load-rated. Capron Road got load-rated. We're currently in a kind of a heavy design mode to try to get some plans on the street so that we can get some of these bridges taken care of. And right now, there's a lot of money being thrown around, so the more shovel-ready bridges we have, the better position we'll be in. And then real quickly, that, the end of item three just shows the, the next couple of years of what we've got for bridge work going on. So next year, Poplar Grove Road over Beaver Creek will be, that's fully, that's 80% federally funded. That'll get reconstructed, and we'll talk a little more about the bridge bundling package that hopefully will get redone, or get, those three bridges will get redone in 2024, Mill Road, Capron, Denny. And then Shattuck Road is one that, hoping in 2025, that would be over the Mosquito Creek and Spring Township, and then Woodstock Road in 2025 as well. So that's my report. I'm available for questions.
Any questions in the boardroom? Mr. Schabacher?
Yeah, Justin mentioned about that raised median. How high is that going to be, you know, approximately?
Sure. It's, typically, it's curb height, which is typically six inches, six inches high. So it, they're not quite to the design stage yet, so they, you know, it could be a barrier curb instead of a mountable curb, so there's two different curb styles.
The barrier curb, how high is that?
That can be eight inches. So, yeah. So it's, emergency vehicles, you know, should be able to traverse those, but, you know.
I had heard some talk, they thought they're going to be kind of like the highway divider like we have on the bypass on 20 that goes under Poplar Grove Road, goes under that bridge, you know, that's what, a couple feet, two, three feet, whatever?
Yeah, yeah, that's a 42-inch F-wall, they call it. So that's, that's a, that's a barrier wall, is what that term would be.
That doesn't look right now, that's what they're looking to do on 20 with that barrier wall.
At this very initial stage, that is correct, that is not the intended, yep.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Justin in the boardroom on the phone? Sheri?
I just have a comment. I must, I did watch the webinar, and I must thank you, you made Boone County very, very proud. Did a great job.
Any other questions or comments? I have one question. That, that plan also includes a bike path, correct? And who maintains that?
That's going to be a next battle. That is scheduled to be a bike path, and that's because it was on our long-range greenways plan. So by state statute, the complete straight state statute, they're required to put in a pedestrian facility, and so they're required to build that. Prior to this past year, we had to pay 20% of that capital cost. States, the state statute just changed where they, IDOT has to pay 100% of the project. However, there's nothing addressing long-term maintenance and, yeah, long-term maintenance and operation of that bike facility. So it's, it's, it's been a common practice here recently that, that IDOT turns that over to the local agencies. You know, I, I, I'm going to try to resist that as much as possible, so, but I, that's, that's been common, that, that, that one, over to a local agency. And so we'll see how that goes about. It's, it'd be a tough battle not to, not to do that, but we'll, we'll see what happens.
I'd assume they'd take special equipment, snow clearing and whatnot, four-wheelers or side-by-sides with plows on them. It's not like you can haul truck on there, and, I guess, and there's a lot to go into that, but.
Yeah, so I did have a conversation with both the Park District and the Conservation District, you know, kind of advising them of, of this future action and potential pressures from IDOT to maintain that. And, you know, we're, Highway Department, you know, we're, you know, our focus is not necessarily in, in that type of transportation, so we're certainly going to resist it, and, you know, we'll see what happens, I guess, when it, when it plays out here, but.
Good luck. Any other questions? All right, thank you. We will move to Section 8, Written Monthly Departmental Reports and Updates. Does anybody have anything? Moving to new business. Item 9, I make a motion to approve claims with the understanding that Carl Johnson abstains from voting on.
You don't have to answer.
I have to?
Yeah, you have to answer.
I'd like a motion to approve claims with the understanding that Carl Johnson abstains from voting on all claims presented by William Charles, and on all claims presented by Core and Maine, and on all claims submitted by Boone County Highway Department. Bill Robertson abstains from voting on all claims presented by B. Robertson Service?
She'll move it.
Motion made by Steve Schabacher, seconded by Jonathan Van Laar. Discussion? All those in favor say, we do have to roll call?
Because we actually approved the claims.
We'll get this right sooner or later.
You want me to do the roll call for you? Carl Johnson?
Yes.
Kerguiske, yes. Jonathan Van Laar?
Yes.
Dave Wiltsey?
Yes.
Ray Larson?
Aye.
Steve Schabacher?
Yes.
Ryan Curry?
Yes.
Tom Wahlberg?
Yes.
Bill Robertson?
Yes.
Jerry Bartelt?
Yes.
Rodney Riley?
Yes.
And Freddie DeLa Trinidad?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item 9.1, I need a motion to approve SUP-02-2022 ILPV Boone 1 LLC Special Use. Motion made by Steve Schabacher?
Second.
By Bill Robertson?
Roll call on this, do you think? Just moving it down.
Discussion?
Thank you. Good evening. So I'm going to brief the site and the project, and then I will pass it on to the project representative who is here with us today. So the site is the township of the Corning Road and Russellville. The entire site is 112 acres. However, the project area is only 2 acres. Currently, the land designation is crop land, and the site is zoned A1 Agricultural Preservation District. The applicant is seeking a special use permit for an energy facility that is greater than 1 megawatt. What you see in the site plan are two photovoltaic solar projects that are co-located, which means that there are two projects of 2 megawatts each for a total of 4 megawatts. When we reviewed the site plan, there, it is fenced, it is meeting all of the setbacks, and as you can see, the entrance is located off Marengo Road. I wanted to give a brief informational item. So if you recognize, some of the members might recognize this project, it was previously approved by the county board in 2018 with conditions. And so what we will be proposing are essentially the same conditions in a reorganized manner, which are being proposed. This type of use requires a special use in the A1 Agricultural Preservation District. It was sent out for, for review by other agencies. There was a pre-application meeting that I had with the applicant representative, or, yeah, with the representative. Building and zoning reviewed this, and so did the Boone County Solar Water Conservation District, who gave a favorable recommendation. When I put under building and zoning permits and conditions is because when the applicant is ready to take out permits to actually build the solar facility, they will have to go through a whole other process to make sure that all of the conditions are being met, and all the documents and all the permits that they are required to have are being presented at that time. When I looked at the comprehensive plan, the future intended use of this area is agriculture. Agricultural is intended for a variety of ag uses, including agritourism. When we looked at the use and the zoning, we found that it wouldn't be in conflict as there are regulations in place to bring the site back to its original state. Some of the goals that can be met from the comprehensive plan are looking at Chapter 4, which is promoting the use of alternative energy sources and considering the natural environment. The Boone County Planning Commission did vote in favor, 3 to 0, on January 18. I also wanted to give a summary of the zoning Board of Appeals meeting. I included that also in the cover page of the documents in the agenda item, but there were many concerns from the public, from neighbors, from Bonus Township, as well as the zoning board members. There were issues, and I will run through them briefly, but they are, like I said, in the cover document, but there was concerns with Marengo Road having traffic or lots of traffic. The entrance could become a site issue. There was concerns about the train tile, which you've also heard during public comment. Some nearby residents think that this would be an eyesore or bring their property values down. There was a concern with fire or emergency response, any large outdoor lights that may be present. And Bonus Township also submitted a letter that expressed concerns related to, again, that driveway, and then property values as well as farmland, protecting farmland. The zoning board had some concerns with the conditions, which, again, I included in that cover page, the two conditions that they voted on and approved to become part of the overall conditions. And one of them was the decommissioning plan assurance, which would be 100% upfront, and then a property value guarantee, which was also added. However, once the committee reviewed, or the board reviewed the findings of fact, they did not find that the facts were met, and so they voted 0 to 4 on that. And when the vote for the actual project was up, they also denied that 0 to 4. Staff at this time is recommending in favor of the special use with conditions. I attached those as a separate document, and I think what we can do, if, if committee agrees, is hear the applicant, and then we can review the conditions, or if you'd like to review the conditions first.
I think we can hear from the applicant first, and then we'll review conditions.
Okay. Michael Olson is here as a rep, as well as somebody else, I don't know. We also have a postman.
Hello, my name is Michael Olson, and I'm a project developer with NG North America. My job is to lead the pre-construction activities in, for solar projects in Illinois. Joining here with me today is Jill Laughlin from our civil engineering team, and I believe we have a few folks on, on the phone as well with the Zoom. So NG has a really long history developing infrastructure and utility projects for over 100 years now, and we've been operating various generation projects for, for the past 50 in North America. My team, Distributed Renewables, is based out of Chicago, and we have a strong presence throughout the Midwest, owning and operating dozens of projects with rural electric cooperatives and other community solar programs across Wisconsin, Minnesota, Iowa, and Illinois. And here's a map of our projects and a few, a few notes on, on how big they are and where they're located. So we currently have five in Illinois as well. It's a little hard to see up there, but four of them are located in Whiteside County, and were actually completed last year as part of the community solar program. And our business is long-term ownership and operation of these projects. We intend to be good neighbors and community members. So this project was originally approved for a special use permit by the county board in 2019 in preparation for the state's community solar program. Over 700 projects had applied, but only 100 were selected, which was through a random lottery process. This one was not selected, and so all, along with the rest, it was placed on a waitlist. The expectation that it'd be first in line for future community solar programs. So that, with the passage of the energy bill this past fall, there's going to be a new community solar program opening in the spring. So those waitlist projects are going to be first in line to, to fill the, the program. So even though the project wasn't built after it was approved the first time, we have the, the choice to select which projects we move forward with, and if approved, we will certainly be building these two projects. So this particular location was selected, most importantly, because of its proximity to the existing distribution lines along Marengo Road. The, the line's ability to cost-effectively accommodate a project of this size is a, is a big factor in our economics. And no significant upgrades will, will be needed to ConEd's distribution system here, so it just is a really standard interconnection process. The project will also benefit Boone County specifically with a steady flow of property tax revenue. We estimate that to be, to start at around $10,000 to $15,000 a year. And we would also look to hire local resources where we can to the East and Peaceville, and we've done so on previous projects. Additionally, community solar gardens benefit the wider community by allowing those who aren't able to or can't install residential solar systems in their property to be able to offset their electricity use through a subscription to the generation from these projects. Another benefit with solar, it doesn't require any fuel deliveries or emit any emissions. Once it's built, it essentially. Once it's built, it essentially sits there and soaks up the sun, produces electricity. I'd like to take some time now to address some of the concerns that came up at the zoning meeting, namely the safety of the facility and its equipment. As I touched on before, NG has been in the energy industry for a very long time, and safety is its highest priority. To that end, we'll be using high-quality Tier One solar modules in this project. The exact make and model hasn't been selected yet, but they will have been tested and certified to be non-hazardous to the environment. This will still be an electric generating station that necessitates certain safety concerns. As such, it'll be surrounded by an eight-foot-high security fence with a locked gate at the front, and only qualified individuals will be able to access the facility. And regarding the access road along Marengo Road, the placement, we actually drove by the site earlier today and absolutely understand the concern, and will be willing to move it. What's shown here is a preliminary site plan, and while the fence area is likely not to change, the access road will, for our design, will probably want to move it a little bit to the west. And we'll work with the building permitting authority to ensure its location is safe for both the community and our workers. Another worry was what would happen in case of a fire. While it's important to note that that hasn't ever occurred on any of NG's other similar ground-mounted solar facilities like this, we make sure to reach out to the local fire department at the start of construction to make them aware of the project and offer training in a site safety walk. We'll also make sure they have access to the facility if they wish. If a fire were to occur, the very first step would be to evacuate the area before contacting the local fire department. Next, we have a twenty-four-hour emergency phone number that should be called so we can coordinate the appropriate response. That phone number will be listed in the project signs at the front of the property and goes to three separate operations and maintenance individuals who will be on call. The next point I'll touch on is how the project will affect drainage in the area. I really want to emphasize that our stormwater management plan will improve soil infiltration and reduce runoff. We'll work with seeding and habitat restoration experts to plant sustainable pollinator-friendly seed mixes that will promote native flora and fauna habitat. They'll provide de-purued vegetation that will reduce runoff compared to row crops and leave the property with better soil condition for agriculture once the project is removed. Lastly, I have two changes to the permit conditions I'd like to request of the board. The first is regarding the drain tile survey described in three E of the proposed conditions. Standing after talking with the project manager, Mike Grismer, is that there are drain tiles in the very northeast corner of the property. It's shown here, it's the overall larger bold black line, but not within the project area itself in the southwest of the property. We hope that, given this information, the county board revised the requirement to require a survey and limit it, so we would only be liable for the damages if they were to occur on any drain tiles. We came across this issue for one of our other solar projects in Whiteside County. During construction, we had damaged some of the drain tiles on site, and as soon as we were aware of it, we went out and fixed it, and we commit to doing the same on this leased property. Secondly, I have some concerns with the property value guarantee after reviewing the proposed language with my team, and would request it not be included in the permitting conditions. This hasn't been a permitting requirement that we've come across before, and it would impose the highly volatile risks of the housing market onto our solar project. That said, the last thing we want to do is negatively affect our neighbors, and we will work with a landscape architect to make sure that there's aesthetically pleasing landscape screening along the southern border and the eastern border. And once the pollinator plants surrounding the arrays within the project itself, that will also increase the aesthetics once they start to emerge. To reiterate, this is essentially the same project that was approved in 2019 and meets the same standards as it did then when there was the property value guarantee. And we really want to be a good neighbor to the community and commit to fixing any of the drain tiles that we would damage if there were any on the property. And thank you for letting me speak today, and are there any questions?
All right, any questions or comments? Freddie De La Trinidad, you have the floor.
I was just wondering, what does the property owner think about all this? Does he agree with it? Is he happy with it?
Want me to speak?
Sure.
Got a bad knee, folks. My name is Mike Grismer. My brother and I owned that piece of property for probably thirty years.
Sir, can you please post your address as well?
My address is nine zero one four Voss Road in Marengo.
Thank you.
And your question one more time?
How do you feel about it? Do you agree with it? Are you happy with this?
I am. I have four wind turbines in central Illinois. They're in the middle of farm country. I would not want to have turbines up here. I would much rather have the solar panel. The solar panels are low visibility, and the trees are properly placed. Oh, you're very, you're only going to see the tips of the panels, I'm sure. And it's right next to the Enbridge plant where the product could be used, so I think it's a win-win. Anybody else?
Any other questions in the boardroom? Go ahead, Steve, Mr. Shabacher, and then please state whether your question is for the landowner or the?
Developer?
Developer.
Developer? He's here. We had a person here, as you heard earlier, Mr. Alwanger, who had some concerns. Can you tell me, can you give somewhat of a guesstimation on how far this project is from his home, the residence where he lives? That may be kind of hard to answer, but I'd be really curious to know how far his residence is.
I don't have an exact number with me right now.
Approximately a quarter mile.
Quarter mile?
Where is he? It's actually Charles Spear. Charles Spear.
Jonathan? So where would Mr. Fay's house be on this map? Go ahead, Mr. Fay, you can point it out.
Okay. Let me ask you a question, I can think I can answer. I got two of the neighbors here, I live up, right there. I'm just across the road. I've got a neighbor that's Marca Ducey, that lives just down the road. I've got Jeremy Adams, who lives right, right next to it. Sherry will point to it. It's right there among Marengo Road.
Right here?
Up, out.
To the right? Right there?
Yeah, right there, that's where Jeremy lives. Laverne, or Darrell House, back here, lives in the old set of buildings, right there in the corner of there. No, back in the corner.
There's two houses in that plot.
Oh, right here? Right here?
Yep. And then directly across the road, he couldn't be here tonight, is Nick DeBryan. He's in Florida, and he's not in favor of it, because it's right there in a crowd of that evidence, right directly across from his house.
And this is his house, right here?
That's Nick DeBryan, yes.
He's not here, so, as he mentioned, so he might be able to speak.
Sherry Bertelt?
Yes, to the, well, be on our board right here. It'd be to, as we're looking at, it would be to the left. What is the property right there to the left?
The pumping station.
Yes, the pumping station for the gas?
Yes.
Enbridge.
That's the gas line?
That's Enbridge, right?
That's Embers. I'm pointing for this. You can allow a gas thing right there, even with solar in.
I'm with you. Go ahead, Jonathan. I guess I have a question for the land, the property owner, landowner. Do you or your brother live on this property or adjacent to it?
We do not live on that property. We live south of Marengo.
Both of you?
In the country.
Mr. Riley?
Mike, you're okay with one of these going next to your farm on Voss Road?
Yes.
Okay. And I just have another comment, if you don't?
I stated that I did not want to see the turbines. The turbines that they put on the ones in Douglas County are five hundred and fifty-four feet from the ground to the tip of the blade. That is two football fields.
Just, Riley?
I'm from central Illinois, so I know exactly what you're talking about with the turbines. And I don't think it's any secret, most of the board members know, some of the public might know. Before I started my thirty-year career in Marengo, I was, I grew up on a farm, so I know exactly where you guys are coming from. I understand that there's tax money to be made on something like this, but in my heart, farm ground is farm ground, and I will be voting no on this issue. Thank you.
Mr. Van Lahr?
Yeah, I will be voting no on this as well. I don't think that we can turn this farmland into a poor use of inefficient energy, so I will be voting no.
Freddie De La Trinidad?
I will be voting yes, just because I think it's your land, you can do whatever you want with it. If you want to put solar panels on there, that's your choice. If you want to put, if you want to grow corn, you want to grow soybeans, that's your choice. Who am I to say no?
If I can make a point, the land will return to farmland eventually. It will be decommissioned at the end of the project and restored to existing use, and it's not that this land will never be farmed again.
What is the length of that project?
It could be twenty-five to thirty-five years.
You know, I would also note that by virtue of our ground cover?
Can you, can you tell us who's speaking, please?
I'm sorry, this is Eric Lucerbrink. I'm with NG North America and a colleague of Michael Olson and Joe Loughlin as well.
Thank you.
And I just wanted to note that as it relates to the, to the farmland, that the ground cover that, we install this across all of our projects and all of our distributed solar projects in North America, which means that we've done it, you know, nearly a hundred times, and we've done it dozens of times up here in the upper Midwest. It's one of the industry-leading programs, I would argue. It is, it is inclusive of native habitat and pollinator gardens as our ground cover throughout the entire project. If you go to, in fact, if you go to certain websites, there's about three percent in the state of Illinois of undisturbed native habitat across the state. And so this is a way that, it's a very small way, admittedly, but it's a way to sort of provide restoration in a dual-use context, but provide restoration to the soil and to the floor and fauna of the region. And what, what other benefits do we anticipate? Number one, if you have any pollinator crops within about a mile, if you look at the NREL studies, those pollinator crops would benefit from, from having pollination gardens like this in the area, and I think that that's probably not too extensive, but that's a benefit. Number two, as it relates to the farmland, you're going to see deep-rooted natural habitat that go four to six feet down. So over the course of this, over the course of the life of this project, that soil will be restored to a condition that is superior to what it is today as farmland. And again, that's not the end-all be-all, but I guess I'm a bit of a, kind of a true believer in this, and it's something that we've done from the get-go for our program. I personally am kind of proud of it and hopeful that people will see not just the visual beauty of this program, but also the value of it to the, to the, to the longevity and the flora and fauna and the local environment as a restorative process.
Go ahead, Sherry.
I just want to clarify what I said about, the pumping plant is right there, that's for the sand tar that is being pumped through Boone County from Wisconsin, starting at our county line all the way to the decal line. I have walked that area, and I do not remember this many people being against a pump line that runs tar sand through our county that has actually two lines running through it, one chipping it down, one taking the bad chemicals back up to Canada. Now, that being said, I would say that they have more problems, or could have more problems, if there was a puncture or anything done to those gas lines or those oil lines running in from Canada than they would ever have from a solar. And I think right now, people better start to consider that those sand tar lines, there's two of them, they better look where they're at, because they went right behind and right to the other side of Walmart. It runs right by this town. I have absolutely no objection to something that is solar, that is a lot safer than running sand tar lines through the property, that if they're punctured, the amount of gas that will come out of them will kill you. I also have passed out the kits to save people from this. So I will be voting for solar for that reason. If they didn't object to the pipeline, I see no reason for them to object to this.
I have a comment. I didn't get voted, none of us did, for our personal opinion on any of this. We got voted to represent the people, and if the people speak, I have to listen to them and take into their consideration, their livelihood, and it's their investment, just as I knew it as well, the developer. If this is my home, I would not want to look at that, and I'm not against your project at all. I think it's a great project, I just think it's badly placed. And I think there are probably a lot more opportunities than you think to put something that's not viable tillable ground that takes crops and replaces them with this. So that is my two cents on it. Anybody else have any?
Or should we try?
Okay, sorry. It's okay. Any other comments or questions in the boardroom or on the phone?
On the phone.
Chairman? Is that you? Dave Wiltsey? Okay?
Yes, thank you. It's my recollection, and I went through the documents as I was listening to the discussion. This was actually approved by the county board in 2018, is this correct? But I believe I heard said, and I see that in the background.
Because he's gonna?
Yes, that's correct.
So this is back to us because it's gotten off a waitlist, and there were a few proposed changes, is that correct?
It was on a waitlist, and now, or it's still on a waitlist, I'm sorry, but it's a top choice now for the next lottery.
Yeah, we're renewing the zoning permit.
Essentially, but it's?
With respect to the comment of the owner representative, if I'm seeing that right, the business representative, that they would evacuate first and call the fire department next, I need to stress that I believe the fire, the fire department is a 911 call, and somebody's got to be doing that while the evacuation takes place. I don't know what kind of evacuations entailed or anything else, but I wouldn't even want to give a three-to-five-minute delay to getting to the fire department, because as we all know, it's probably one of the fire protection districts, which, you know, is not as a quick response as Melvadaire Municipal Department would be. So that's just a comment I have. If anybody has gotten their recent electric bill, they've seen quite the jump, because the General Assembly has added a ten percent immediate increase and a twenty to twenty, thirty percent increase in the near future. I think we're going to have to look more seriously, more often, at the solar ventures as adding to our electric base, because the real, the reality of our shutting down our nuclear plants is that electricity is going to have to be done by fossil fuels or solar. And this, again, this is not one that has anything to do with any kind of wind turbines. As a consequence of all those factors, particularly the fact it was already approved in 2018, I will be voting? As a consequence of all those factors, particularly the fact it was already approved in 2018, I will be voting yes.
Thank you, Dave. Go ahead, Mr. Shabaker.
Izzy, you mentioned the ZBA, and the, the, I can't quite remember, but there's a couple of things they didn't approve. Could you run that by me again, please?
Okay, so the zoning board voted to add two conditions.
Yes.
To the condition portion of this project. However, the findings of fact were not approved, and neither was the project. So they voted not in favor.
Not in favor of the project.
And as a point of clarification, staff is recommending in favor of the conditions without the ones that were added on during the motions at ZBA. So it does not include the property guarantee, and it does not include the assurance upfront.
The ZBA did not approve this.
That's right.
Any other questions or comments in the boardroom or on the phone?
Ryan, this is Carl. I've, I've got a question for Izzy. Izzy, I guess I'm a little confused exactly what the scoop is with this project. So it's, it's an approved project currently, correct?
No.
With a special use that is not expired?
No, no, this is an expired, previously approved project.
So this project has, has been approved, has expired.
Yes, and now they're reapplying. Sorry.
And they're reapplying, but they're not just reapplying for an extension. This is, it's almost like it's a new project. You said they made changes, or what's the scoop?
There have been no significant changes, and essentially reapplying.
Okay. Thank you.
I can make one small stipulation. We, the previous developer, when they got the approval, they, we bought the project from them. So we're coming here, we are going to build this project if we get a permit. They came here, they got an approved project, and they did not build it. And now they have sold it to us. The permit had expired on it. If we get this project, we have a big backing. We, if we get the permit, we will build this project. We will not waste any more time.
So who owned the project in, the land in 2018?
The previous developer named Sunrise.
And did Mr. Grismer own the land in 2018?
I just, I just want to clarify, and that, they didn't get drawn out of the hat, right? That's, that's, so now what you're saying, whatever the state's calling this new thing, is that going to be drawn out of the hat too, or?
No, so the original program in 2019 was drawing out of hats, a random lottery. And all the projects that didn't get selected through that were put on a waitlist.
Okay, that's right.
This new program that's opening up in the spring is only limited for those waitlist projects and the developers. So we get to choose which of our waitlisted projects we want to move forward. March 14th, when we go to the IPA and tell them which projects we want to build, these two will be part of that for our allocations. So we get to make that decision.
And I don't think any of us have the answer to this question, but somebody out there said something about getting your electric bill. And I did happen to just take a peek at my electric bill that had skyrocketed, and not just because I'm keeping the horses water, you know, not frozen. So I'm always curious, and I don't think either of you gentlemen can answer this. I'm always curious, where's this funding coming from? Is it from those three or four $8 charges that each of us have each month or something? I don't think you guys can answer it, but it maybe is just a rhetorical question, but I'm always scratching my head about where's the funding coming from, for these things, the subsidies, call it.
Yeah, this is Eric Lusabrink again with NG, and if I, if I, you're correct. We cannot precisely answer the question that you raised as to why, what additional charges are being applied to my bill, and what is the source of those. I, I'm certain, though, that it's not this particular project because it's obviously not built yet. I will say that as a community solar garden project, we do provide, the, the project provides commed with certain benefits to the grid that, that they benefit from. Part of this, though, is a net metering, and subscribers to this project, and everybody is eligible to subscribe, will be able to recognize a, a small credit on their bill. And that is, in part, what helps support some of these community solar garden programs.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments before we move to vote? Go ahead, Sherry.
Nope. No, I was just going to say something.
This is not a roll call. This isn't.
Well, let's give it a shot. Well, let's just give it a shot without a roll call. You want a roll call, Iz?
Well, I was just wanting to make sure that you know which conditions you're motioning with, if there's any further discussion on those conditions. The applicant also made a request to take a look at 3E for the drain tile survey and update that.
I'd like to hear the conditions again.
Okay.
If I can just clarify on the, on the drain tile condition, we're not particularly opposed. We're, again, this is Eric Lusabrink, we're not opposed to the drain tile survey at all, frankly. But, but the outcome, whatever the outcome is on the drain tiles, we will repair whatever's broken. We will absolutely commit to repairing whatever we break. We don't actually think that a drain tile survey is going to be necessary as it's not particularly precise. So we're not, if, if the board wants to include that condition, that's fine with us. It's, it's not, it's not, it's not particularly constructive because whatever the case may be, we will, we will commit to the other condition, which is essentially what we're getting at. Repair all broken drain tiles, if any. We'll commit to that. As to this other aspect, the property, the property value, that's a, that's a much more subjective circumstance, and it's one where we, we have no control over the vagaries of property fluctuations. And so it is a, it is a very difficult aspect to address. I think Michael and Joe did mention that we're going to provide screening, track screening around the project on the southern and eastern side. So from a, from a, from a neighboring standpoint, you know, they should, they should be insulated from the negative visual effects of, of the project, if any. I just thought I would make those two points as it relates to.
I'd also like to add that the drain tile on the property is not within the project area. It is on the property itself, but not within the project footprint, which is another reason why we are making that request.
So do you want to move forward and vote for the application with the use of, with the permit? Survey drain tile?
So if you, Kevin, if you would please scroll down to 3E. So this is the entire condition. So the applicants are saying that there are no drain tiles in the project area. So perhaps the survey isn't necessary, but they will replace any drain tiles if any are broken.
That's correct. That's correct.
So to update that, we also heard from another representative that they're okay with the condition as is. So my recommendation is to leave it, and we can move on.
Mr. Shabaker?
Once again, sorry, I'm sorry to drive you down. Do you run that, those conditions? I know, I'm going to be quick.
Okay.
I can't read the words.
Okay, so yeah, if we start from the beginning, so these are the conditions that the graph is recommending. All right, so the first conditions include conformance to the site plan and narrative. And again, once they, they're ready for permits, they will have to bring a site plan, which is number two. So a full site program review will have to be administered. We will look at everything, height, the fencing. And there's also 2C, the landscaping plan, which the Boone County Conservation District included updated recommendations for how the landscaping plan should look like and what is appropriate for the area in terms of the plantings and the flora and things like that. And so that's also included in the conditions, but that's something that they will have to follow. So that's 2C. If you can move this down, thank you. Number three, installation and design. This addresses the panels, it addresses the electrical lines that need to be inspected, and it also addresses the drain tile investigation. The qualified engineer will have to look at the foundation and the design of the panels, and they will provide a report for us. Thank you. Okay, number four addresses the building permits. So again, this is what they will have to present when they are ready to build. So this will be a site plan with existing conditions, and then 4.2, a site plan with proposed conditions. Kevin, if you could scroll down. Thank you. And number five is a really big one. It's the decommissioning plan. So this is what Joel was talking about, the decommissioning of the project. So bringing it back, taking away the panels, recycling them, all that is laid out. They have to present a plan, they have to give us a value of salvage, et cetera. Go down. And then number five, the last one before six is financial surety. So this is the one we were talking about. They will present financial assurance for the decommissioning. And so currently, and in all of our projects, we have done a scale of assurance, and that's what is there now. So they will provide at the first year a certain number of assurance and move up from there till year seven, which would be 100%.
Wasn't proposed to be 100% at the start?
Yes, but staff isn't proposing that. All right, and then so number seven, it addresses all the permits that they will need to make sure that they provide, including the special use permit, any building permits, any county highway right-of-way permits and things like that that they might need, the natural resource information report, which is already attached to this application. And then we have a few other ones. So any electric transmission to interconnection agreements, they will have to present construction agreements. They do get 24 months to get the project up and going just because of the type of project that it is. And I did put February 2024. However, if it gets approved in March, then it'll be March 2024, et cetera. Number 11 just states that if the project doesn't start within two years, then it's no longer valid. Next page, please. All right, number 12 addresses construction hours, kind of limiting where the construction will be. And I just want to make a comment that this would be the only time where we would see most of the traffic is when construction is being done. Otherwise, it is a low-traffic use. All responsibilities of the applicant under this section shall transfer to any owner of the solar energy facility. However, the applicant has stated that they will build a project and they will keep it. There is a time limit for all of our solar projects, which is 45 years. The applicant must obtain a survey with the project area, and they will present this to the county assessment office in order to get a parcel number so that appropriate assessment can be done on the project, and of course, compliance with all other applicable local, state, and federal laws.
Was there any, I don't know if I might have missed, was there anything talked about screening or anything like that?
Yes, that is in there too, and as well as in the landscaping plan.
Thank you.
Yes.
So that being said, we're going to move forward to vote on this project with the proposed conditions stated the January 25th. Jonathan, go ahead.
So then just to reiterate, then, what proposed conditions did the ZBA vote to approve is not in this?
So it is two. Kevin, if you could please open the cover page document under the board docs. Yep, the first one, yep. If you scroll down, there's the first highlighted one. I don't, oh, sorry, it's the, yeah, scroll down, sorry. So it was essentially, it was the financial assurance 100%, and then a property value guarantee. Can you scroll down?
The decommissioning 100% upfront, then the property value guarantee for the surrounding neighboring residents.
Right, so 514A, so it would just be 100% upfront, and then all the way to the end is where I added 17. And this is the really big property value guarantee.
Yep.
Okay.
Right. Any other questions or comments?
Just to clarify, staff, the ones we just went through, that's what we're proposing.
Last questions or comments before we move forward? I can't, sorry, I'm sorry.
So is the property value guarantee not recommended? This is not part of the vote?
Staff is not recommending that condition.
But I mean, what we're voting on right now, that's, it does not include that property value.
Correct.
Guarantee, and it does not include the survey of the tiles because it's not on there, and the company has promised to fix any tiles that they break.
No, that one is staying the same. They will still have to provide a survey.
So, can I, so David, so the tile survey is staying in, the property value guarantee is coming out, and the 100% decommissioning upfront is coming out as well.
So it was never proposed. Just want to clarify. Thank you.
All right, we're going to move forward.
Hey, Ryan, this is, Ryan, this is Carl.
Go ahead, Carl.
I guess I'm, I'm a little puzzled here. Izzy, please correct me if I'm, if I'm wrong, but ZBA forward sent this, went through this, sent this to us with recommendations, and in those recommendations are those two conditions that they added, correct?
So they voted on those conditions to add them, yes, and that was favorable. But the recommendation, the final recommendation really is write the vote on the project, and that, they did not have a favorable vote on that. Staff, so.
I understand, I understand staff's, I understand staff's recommendations. I'm just trying to see exactly what, what we're supposed to be taking a look at. Normally, if ZBA sends us something, and this is odd because they voted the project down, but normally, we would vote on first what they've given us. If they've added conditions, we need to evaluate those conditions, and we'd have to remove those conditions rather than add them in because they've taken the project, as I understand it, and they've added conditions to it. So if we, if we don't like those conditions, we would need to remove those. But my only question here is, because they voted the project down, how does that affect things? If they had voted positive on the project, it's my opinion, we would have to vote down any conditions that we wanted to remove because it's what they've given us and presented us. You see what I'm saying?
Understood.
Well, okay.
No, go ahead, Izzy, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, that's fine. So I presented the, the cover page that had, right, like you said, Carl, the conditions that they added, and then the votes that happened. So really, the end vote was no, right, unfavorable. So I, I'm not sure how the committee wants to address it. But staff is recommending these conditions without the ZBA wants, that the ZBA never voted no anyway on the project.
I guess that's where I'm, that's where I'm confused as to how, how this is all plays out. If we, if we just play this out a little differently, that, that ZBA passed this project with these conditions, we would get this project with these conditions. I just don't know because they voted the project in and of itself down.
Right, right.
These projects are still stuck onto this, this form right now. I, I want to make sure we're doing this right, if we're going to, however we're going to vote regardless. So we either, if, if we want these conditions on there, then we either need to add them, or if we don't want them on there, we need to, need to take them off. I'm not sure how that plays out.
Yeah, would Carla maybe will need to answer that question?
Carla is on the phone.
Yeah, I'm on the line. Hi, everyone. You know, I think, and I'm, I'll review it before the full county board meeting to make sure. Obviously, the committee vote is not binding on the board, but I think it's like any other motion. Someone makes a motion to, for instance, approve the project with staff conditions, or someone makes a motion to approve the project, but, you know, removing condition number five, for instance. So I think whoever makes the motion is the person who determines what the committee votes on.
I think the chairman is stating that had those conditions been brought up front of the ZBA, would they have voted the same way? The ZBA has not seen those conditions that was added by staff because it, were added after the ZBA voted, correct?
No, ZBA voted.
They did vote, okay.
But the project at the end was voted down.
Voted down, okay, understood.
If I may make a point of order or suggestion, Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
Sure.
What, what I'm going to suggest is that we, we vote yes or no on approval of the project, and then we vote on each of what I think is three. And then we vote on each of what I think is three conditions. Up or down on each one of those conditions separately. Then when it comes to the full board at our, at our third meeting in the third Thursday, we'll know what we're voting on and what we approved and didn't approve. Obviously, if the vote is not to approve the project, all the rest of it goes down, period.
I understand what you're saying, Mr. Wiltsey.
So I guess if, if there's a condition that somebody is particularly interested, otherwise would somebody be interested in all the conditions that staff is proposing and make that motion?
Right. I would, I would propose that we vote on the proposed conditions. PB Boone 1 LLC that were made on January 25th of this year.
Staff conditions.
Correct. Go ahead, Mr. Larson.
Do not have a motion on the board to vote on the project, right?
Yes.
I call for the question.
And then after that, we vote, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And I'm going to recommend we vote, right? What's that? I'm going to recommend we do a roll call vote.
And this is a vote to approve the project. Is that correct?
With proposed conditions made January 25th? From staff.
Excuse me. I'm not allowed to speak even though I was acknowledged before it was called the question.
Yeah, he just called, yeah.
I was acknowledged first.
Not after the question is called.
Before you called the question, I was acknowledged.
Fine.
Could that be a Carla question? Carla, if a board member had been recognized to speak and another one called the question, will the board member that was recognized to speak be able to speak prior to the vote?
Yeah, I think if a board member has been recognized to speak before the question is called, and then the, the mo, the motion to call the question needs to be voted on too. But I think, is that Mr. Larson who was saying he had been called on before?
Yes, he was recognized.
Okay, yeah. So I think, I think Mr. Larson should be given the chance to speak and then the board would vote on the motion to call the question.
Okay, the floor is yours, Mr. Larson.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, I, I believe with basically what Mr. Johnson is saying, this came through the ZBA, they added those conditions and they were approved, even though the final, in the end, it was not approved. Those conditions were legally added is what I see. So we should be voting on it with those added conditions. And if we want to have a vote to take any of them out, then we would do that. And then approve what we have left or disapprove, whichever. Have a vote on what's left over.
Can those changes even be made now that we've called?
Yeah, there's a question has been called. Yeah.
And I second the call for the question. Thank you.
That being said, we need to vote.
First, we need to vote on calling the question.
All those in, can we do?
You go ahead.
All those in favor to the vote, call the question, say aye.
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 All opposed, same side?
Aye.
Motion carries. And now we will vote on the proposed conditions, Illinois PB Boone 1 LLC from January 25th, 2022. I recommend a roll call if I can.
Um, did we have a motion for this, though?
We have.
We have a motion on the floor, correct? Okay, let's
On the floor.
Okay, let's go ahead. Carl Johnson?
Yes.
Shere Geeski? No. Jonathan Van Lar?
No.
Dave Wiltsey?
Yes.
Ray Larson?
No.
Steve Shabacher?
No.
Ryan Curry?
No.
Tom Walberg?
No.
Bill Robertson?
Yes.
Sherry Bartelt?
Yes.
Rodney Riley?
No.
Freddie De La Trinidad?
Yes.
Six to six, I'm sorry, seven to five. Motion fails.
Motion fails. All right. Thank you. Moving on to nine point three, need a motion to approve planning case RP S03-20 at a replat Candlewick Lake.
It's me again.
It's approved before.
All right.
I make that motion.
Motion made by Ray Larson.
Second.
Seconded by Jonathan Van Lar. Discussion is
All right, thank you. This is a, one of the Candlewick Lake replats. This is three lots going to be turned into one in unit 10, lot M, and the vacation to public utility and drainage easements. The replat was sent out for review. We attached a drainage letter per the county engineer. And the applicant is not proposing any changes at this time. However, if there are any changes in the future, a formal review will be required. The proposed replat is in conformance with the Boone County subdivision and zoning ordinance. Staff is recommending approval.
Discussion. Go ahead, Mr. Van Lar.
Just have a question. So are all these plats buildable?
Yes.
So if you're to replat it three together?
Okay.
Are, can you have three houses on that one plat, on that one plat?
This is an R1, single family residential.
The motion.
Motion is made by Jonathan, or by Ray Larson.
Okay.
Seconded by Jonathan Van Lar. Fine?
Correct. Okay.
Any other questions or discussion? Any questions on the telephone? We need to call it telephone, isn't it? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side? Motion carries. Item 9.4, need a motion to approve the county engineer to begin contract negotiations with to be determined and bring forth a professional services agreement for the Piscasaw Creek Bridge Bundle Phase One and Two Services to the county board.
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Jonathan Van Lar and seconded
Tom.
By
Tom.
By Tom. Discussion? Should I say Tom Walberg? I'm sorry. There's no other Toms in here, but. Moving forward, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Item 9.5, need a motion to approve the purchase of an all wheel drive motor grader from low bidder, Altufur, Altufur? That's, yeah. In the amount of $352,329.
Salute.
Motion made by Steve Shabacher and seconded by Bill Robertson. Discussion?
Question. Um, for Justin on this, so I was reading through this and, and it says that the sale of the grader be offered for out for bids. Is that correct?
Typically what we, yeah, so typically what we do is when we get a new piece of equipment in, we put it as a optional trade in, trade in to the, as part of the bid. So each vendor that puts a bid in, they also put it, they put a bid in for the new equipment and it put a bid in for purchasing our old equipment with that as a traded. So what we do is when we have the low bidder that we're playing a word to, we determine that trade in value and then we offer that to all local agencies as, so instead of, you know, Altufur, in this case, they offered $5,000 value for the old grader. So immediately after that, I went out to all of our townships and, and various agencies. Said, hey, we've got a trade in value of $5,000. Anybody interested in it for that price? So instead of giving it to the low bidder, we give it to our local agency. So, you know, essentially, you know, they might be going to, to the vendor and purchasing a used piece of equipment. So we cut out the metal man and go straight to them and it's, you know, it makes, makes for a good way for them to, to help their equipment. So in this case, Boone Township has a 70-year-old grader. Ours is 50 years old. And so they're like, hey, yeah, we're all over this. They want, they said this is, we want it for 5,000. So then they sell theirs and they upgrade it to, to a new.
This benefits another municipality locally.
That's correct. We, we just do it for local agencies within Boone County. If that doesn't occur, then we have, basically we have to exercise that optional trade in. We have until we receive the new piece of equipment. So if, if an agency doesn't bite at it, like what happened with our last tandem truck, then we put it out for a, a public silent auction and then with a minimum bid of the trade in value bid. And so in last time that we had, we didn't have any bites on it locally through our local agencies, but then we had a, a private person come in and put a low bid on it higher than our trade in value. And that's how we dispose of it. So we have kind of a three tiered step to get rid of our old equipment.
Okay. Thank you for explaining that. That was the question.
And I'm sure the Boone County Museum could, Historic Museum could use it if it doesn't sell.
Yeah, it's, it's amazing. You know, I didn't expect anybody to, but for $5,000, you know, in metal prices, it's probably not a bad. So I, I would like to request that consideration we made to alter that motion. I sent around a sheet of paper since I, you know, the, the bid opening was on Monday, you know, we're, I didn't give myself a lot of time on these things and, and got a lot of different things going on. So the, we're also budgeted to purchase a loader. You know, I'm trying to, a lot of the prices are going up. So, you know, long story short, on this one, I took out one of the pieces of equipment, the V plow within this purchase. So you'll see the deduction. That sheet that I sent around kind of explains where we're at with the bids coming in. It's the bid tab updated and then also the, the extended warranty and then also removing the V plow. The V plow is $15,000. So, and then it also, the bottom line on there is the total value of, or the total, where the source of the money is coming from. So the 5,000 from the township, 315,000 from our line item for vehicles and then the remaining is coming from our equipment line item.
Good news that if you don't purchase the extended warranty, you'll get seven phone calls a day. Make sure you don't want another one.
Right. So yeah, so I, I would kindly request that we alter that motion for 352 to the 336 number. I, I didn't keep a sheet for myself, but I believe it's 336.
Motion's been made. We need to then withdraw the motion, react that motion. Amended. Okay.
Amend it.
I amend the motion.
Need a, a, a motion to amend the price from 352,171 and 5 cents to 355,000 to purchase the
So move 336. The one that's in bold with a black square on it.
336.
Yes, correct.
Motion's been made by Steve Shabacher.
Second.
Seconded by Bill Robertson. And that is money.
Well, first we have to approve the amendment to the
Okay. All those in favor to approve the amendment?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Motion carries. And now we will vote to for the sale. Actually, do you have any other comments?
Approve the vote to approve the amended
Correct.
Motion.
That, you making that motion?
Yes.
The motion has been made by Bill Robertson.
Second.
Seconded by Steve Shabacher. Do you have any other questions or comments?
And we need a roll call because we're spending money.
No, because we're in committee. I don't think
Yeah.
We can, we can go ahead.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Thank you, Justin. Item 9.6, I need a motion to approve resolution for improvement under the Illinois Highway Code B L R 09110, resolution establishing a class two or prohibited truck route, B L R 03210, and approval of a truck access route program acronym TARP grant IGA.
So moved.
Motion made by Rodney Riley and seconded by Sherry Bartel. Discussion? All those in favor say aye. All opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Item 9.7, I need a motion to approve resolution. This is just for Irene Road.
For Irene Road.
Yeah, for Irene.
Motion to approve resolution for improvement under the Illinois Highway Code B L R 09110, resolution establishing a class two or prohibited truck route, B L R 03210, and approval of the truck access route program TARP grant IGA for Irene Road.
Second.
Motion made by Ray Larson and seconded by Jonathan Van Lar. Discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? That motion carries. Item 9.8, I need a motion to approve resolution for improvement under the Illinois Highway Code B L R 9110, resolution establishing a class two or prohibited truck route, B L R 03210, and approval of the truck access route acronym TARP grant IGA for Centerville Road. Motion made by Ray Larson, seconded by Rodney Riley. Discussion?
I'm just not familiar with this location. Justin, can you provide a detail on this one here?
Sure. That is, if you're entering Capron, you know, you go, there's a, there's a curve on the west side of Capron. On, if you're entering Capron on 173, heading east on the west side of Capron, before you get to Capron, the, the first left on the north side of 173, that's Centerville Road. And so Centerville Road then heads to the west and it takes two 90-degree turns and then it goes to Steims Road. And that's the, the section would be from 173 to Steims Road. There's a green elevator, gosh, I forget who's that, that is there, but yeah, there's a green elevator at Steims and, and and Centerville Road. And that was part of the reason why we received Truck Access Route Grant Program was using that as a, a truck destination. And there was intent, I guess I'm getting a little off track, but there is, there's an intent to upgrade that road anyway. So we were able to, to utilize some of this funding as part of that process. I hope that, so basically it's from 173, just on the west side of Centerville, heading back on, I'm sorry, on the west side of Capron, heading back on Centerville towards the west.
Any other questions or comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? That motion carries. Item 9.9, I need a motion to approve wellness services agreement with Swedish-American Better Life Wellness. So motions made by Rod Riley, seconded by Ray Larson. Discussion, huh? Dan, do you have anything to add or?
We had a rep on the phone, she actually had to hop off, so I apologize. But yeah, nothing really too much to add. We've been with Swedish-American Better Life Wellness since 2015. Remaining the same to the county, which is really a benefit to us. If any county board members are unfamiliar with this program, really the most important thing, there's a lot of benefits that, and services that are included as part of this program. The most important, most important event that we do is the annual health, health risk screening event for employees. And what this does is it, for those that are enrolled in the county's health insurance, it's really important so that employees can catch potential issues that could really cost them, you know, their, their, on their health, but also the company and the insurance company kind of end up paying. And so really it's about encouraging that wellness, encouraging employees to catch things early. And so I think we've had, it's been seven years, but I think we've had a good partnership and this is just status quo, just to continue what we've been doing.
Thank you, Dan. Anybody have any questions or comments in regards? Go ahead, Mr. Larson. One second, Ray Larson buzzed in before you.
That's fine.
So this is just a two-year agreement? Yeah?
Yeah, we've been on three years and they're proposing a two-year starting January 1st of this year.
Dave Wiltsey?
Actually, that was the same kind of question I was going to ask because if you look at the term of agreement on page four of the agreement, it's for 24 months to be sure. But then it's automatically renewable for 24 months successively. Add, add, add for item. Uh, don't know that we really want to do that. There ought to be a claw, a clause in there that we, if we give them notice within, let's say 60 days before the 24 months. We if we give them notice within, let's say, sixty days before the twenty four months expires, that we don't want to renew the agreement, that we're allowed to do so. But thi- this is almost an imperperity agreement here.
And, Mr. Wilson.
I'm looking at four A.
Just on on four B, so that's what it's the four B is the termination and talks about either party may terminate at any time with a thirty day advance notice.
Okay, and and it that does help that it's without cause because you get thirty days notice there. Okay, I, okay, I think that'll that I think they have takes care of it. I'm sorry, thank you.
Anybody else else have any questions or comments in regards to the wellness program? All right, that being said, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? That motion carries. Nine point ten, we have raffles that I have signed and Sherry, you have? None that exceeds the limit that we would need to hear from. Item ten, we have no comments or information regarding the landfill. Section eleven, no correspondence or U C C I advocacy groups, which moves us to eleven point three, which would be board member comments. Does anybody have, go ahead, Sherry.
Yesterday, I had the opportunity to meet with for the first time. Illinois Extension Unit. I was very, very happy and to work with them. And that I was really quite surprised at everything that they have going for them. Their four H clubs are absolutely awesome. They have so much going for them. I feel that this is a little gem that we have not used in this county in a long time. And I would encourage everybody to check out our extension unit. Part of them are here in in Belvidere, somewhere in other places. But the ones that are here in Belvidere have to do with the four H and also they have master gardeners and everything for people who have questions. Like I said, they all we have one that works with conservation, one that works with planning of different types of, let's just say, businesses. And how you want to start a business. And of course, then we have the regular extension unit that has to do with health and things such as that. So I think that this is a unit that we should start utilizing more of. That's all I can say.
Thank you. Any other que- board member comments, whether that be in the boardroom or on the phone?
I have a parliamentary inquiry.
Shoot.
That's the first time I think I've ever done that. My parliamentary inquiry is with respect to the five seven vote on the solar item. Is that coming back to the full board then in the third meeting for consideration?
Yes.
This is just moving it forward.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure, well, it's a it's a it's a no. And so it doesn't move forward. And that's why I just wanted to make sure it would be on the third meeting. Because I think we're making a mistake and I'd like to readdress the issue at that time. And I just wanted to make sure it was going to be there for consideration on the third meeting on Thursday. Thank you.
Sherry, Sherry.
Dave, I Tricia and I chatted about that before she left because I was sort of, you know, confused also. But at the end of the day, what she felt had her opinion, and I think it's Izzy's too probably, is that this committee had to vote on that. Going to go forward regardless, but they needed a, just like the ZBA voted, they voted no, and that sort of stuff. But this committee had to take a vote, and that's why we did that, Dave.
That's okay, as long as it'll be back on the agenda on the third meeting in.
Yes.
Of the month.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other questions or comments within the boardroom or on the phone?
Just.
Go ahead.
Just one thing, and I guess this would be more of a question for Carla. I'm just checking out, I I was looking at this a while back on these Roberts rules for call the question. One of the bullet points that I have, what I found is that Roberts Rules of Order do not allow motions to be made at the committee at at committee meetings. Which means call the question can't be called at a committee meeting. I I'm not a one hundred percent sure if that's correct or not. It's just in the information that I provided or that I have looked up. If you do me a favor and check it, that check that out so we have that issue cleared up in case it comes up again, please.
Sure, your question is whether or not the motion to call the question can be made at a committee meeting?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, sure, I'll check.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments within the boardroom or on the phone? All right, that being said, we do have executive session and I would need to. Need a motion to go into executive session discussing the review of the executive session committee minutes.
I make that motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Wahlberg, seconded by Ms. Bartelt. All those in favor, or actually, roll call, correct?
Yep.
Carl Johnson?
Yes.
Shere Geeskey, yes. Jonathan Van Lar?
Yes.
Dave Wiltsey?
Yes.
Ray Larson?
Aye.
Steve Schabacher?
Yes.
Ryan Curry?
Yes.
Tom Wahlberg?
Yes.
Bill Robertson?
Yes.
Sherry Bartelt?
Yes.
Rodney Riley?
Yes.
Freddie De La Trinidad?
Yes.
Motion carries. All for coming.
Do we stay on or do you, do I recall?
Just stay on, Dave.
Thank you.